Hi, I'm Mike Sinello and I'll be your Zoom meeting administrator for tonight's town council meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM Eastern. Before the meeting starts, I put together this brief instructional video to help you get better acquainted with the Zoom meetings platform and how this virtual town council meeting will operate. Before we get started, we would like to kindly ask non-council participants to please keep your audio and video muted throughout unless called upon. As you are brought into the meeting, for example, from a waiting room, you will have the momentary ability to unmute your video. We kindly ask that you refrain from doing so, and each participant's video will be manually muted upon entry, one at a time. If you do not want to see non-video participants, hover your mouse over a non-video participant video image. Click these three dots highlighted in blue and select "Hide Non-Video Participants." If you want to see all the councilmen at the same time, rather than focusing only on the councilman who is speaking, select "Gallery View" in the top right corner of the viewing panel. If you would like to participate in public comment, you must first raise your hand, and you'll be added to the list of public comment participants on a first-come, first-served basis until the meeting's commencement at 7:00 PM. When we say "raise your hand," we don't mean literally hold your hand up to the camera. To raise your hand, first make sure the Participants panel is open at the right of your screen. You can open the Participants panel by clicking the Participants icon at the bottom of your screen. Once the Participants panel is open, to raise your hand, select "Raise Hand" in the bottom right corner of the Participants panel. For telephone-only participants, to raise your hand, press *9 on your telephone touchpad. I will be taking names for public comment as soon as this video finishes, and at the mayor's request, we'll be calling on participants for public comment on a first-come, first-served basis. Once you're called upon, I will send out a request to unmute yourself, as you will be self-muted upon entry. To unmute yourself in desktop, click the unmute icon in the bottom-left corner of the viewing panel, and which looks like a microphone with the red slash through it, or simply select "Unmute" in the request message. For telephone-only participants, press *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Once you've been unmuted for public comment, you'll have five minutes to address the council. Time will be kept by the acting sergeant-at-arms. We'll alert you when you have one minute left. When your time is expired, the sergeant-at-arms will let you know, and I will then mute you at either the mayor's request or at the request of the sergeant-at-arms. I will only act upon their instruction throughout the meeting, and will neither mute nor unmute except upon entry any participant otherwise. For the record, as a Zoom meeting administrator, I will not be an active participant in the meeting. This means, once the meeting is started, my camera and microphone will be muted unless otherwise called upon by either the mayor or the sergeant-at-arms. The final request before this video ends is to please be aware of your surroundings. Please be aware of background noise, such as dogs barking, children yelling, or nearby fan blowing, visible background activity, and potential feedback from your microphone picking up the sound from your speakers. It is for this reason that we highly recommend the use of headphones. Thank you for watching. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, and if you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hands now, and do not put them down until called upon for public comment after the meeting has commenced.
I don't remember how to do it.
Hey, Pat, you're gonna wanna mute yourself?
Hey Pete, is this the public hearing?
Yeah, right now, the public hearing starts at 6:50. We are just letting the public know how, moving forward, we're operating both at public hearings and town council meetings.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, let's see. So, I don't know if you guys are able to hear that. I hope you guys were able to hear that instructional video. If you want to join in public comment, I'll be taking your names down. So, that means I need you to raise your hand, in case you didn't catch that from the instructional video. That doesn't mean we want you to literally raise your hand to the camera. That means we want you to go to the bottom-right of the Participants panel and select and... And then, in the bottom-right-hand corner of the Participants panel, there'll be a button that says "Raise Hand." Pat Erickson, for example, has her hand raised. If you go to the bottom of your screen, in the middle of it, it'll say "Participants." And if you click on that, that'll open up the Participants panel, which will give you the option to raise your hand. So, Pat, I have you down so far. Mike Nahom, if you'd like to join us, you're going to have to unmute yourself. David, the same goes for you. In the bottom-left-hand corner of your screen should be a button that says...
The same, the same for Mike Gold. Mike, if you could unmute yourself?
I've also sent invitations to unmute yourselves, so you guys can just click on the green, the blue version of that button. For the folks at home, if you don't want to see the speaker view, which is only going to highlight the person speaking, you can go to the top-right corner of your screen and select "Gallery View" to see all of the councilmen and Mayor Bass at once. I will be exiting in about 15 or so minutes, right before the meeting starts.
At 6:50, we have the public hearing. It will start the public hearing at 6:50, and then, from there, there'll be an adjournment of the public hearing, and then, as Mike had said, we'll then move into, if it's prior to town council, 7 o'clock, then we will move forward again with listing the names of those people that want to be in public participation. Mike will list those names prior to 7 o'clock, and those will be the names that we will be moving forward with for public participation.
If you are calling in and you are using telephone-only to raise your hand, press *9 on the touchpad. If you are called in, then, if you are called in for public comment or for any sort of participation in the meeting, and you are on your phone only, press *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Stephanie, I see your hand is raised. Pete, is Stephanie our...
She's our secretary recording.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm gonna allow her to unmute herself, in case she needs to jump in.
Thank you, that's what I did. Thanks for handing it here.
And Mike, the same for Randy Dabella. He's our town attorney.
Is he on here somewhere?
Yep, it's a Dee Randall iPhone.
Oh, all right. All right, well, I'm stopping his video, but he is participating in audio.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here audio, but I don't need a video, I don't think.
Nope. Also, Mike, Karen Pollard. She's our Economic Development Director. If we could also unmute her as well.
Do you want her now?
Yep, because she's gonna be talking during the public hearing concerning...
Okay.
Hi, Mike.
Was that, was that Mike? I think it was Mike.
No, it's Dave. I was saying hi to Mike.
I'm sorry, the fellows' voices are all very similar on here. I wasn't looking right at the screen. Hi, Dave.
It's okay.
And Mike, we're at 6:48. Could you, once again, just so, ones that are joining the call, could you kind of go over the ground rules again, so that everybody can be understanding of the new process as we move forward on town council and public hearings?
All right, I'll try to barrel through this as fast as I can, and I'll do this, and I'll slowly say the parts that everyone's really gonna matter. First things first, when you first come into the stream, if you, when you first come into the stream, please do not turn on your video, please do not turn on your audio unless you are called upon or are a councilman. I will be answering to Pete and the Sergeant-at-arms, who is supposed to be Doug Kelly. I guess you guys will have to take care of that. So, I won't be doing anything else other than what they tell me to do. If you need to, if you want to participate in public comment, you need to raise your hand. That does not mean literally raise your hand to the camera. That means you need to go into the Participants panel, which you can open by going, by clicking on the Participants icon in the middle, in the bottom and middle of the video screen. It will open up a white panel to the right that says "Participants," in the bottom-right. There'll be an option to raise your hand. Leave your hand raised until Pete calls on you, so that we know that you want to speak, and we don't keep track, and we don't lose track of you. I'll be taking now names for people who want to participate in public, public comment. And then, when we call on you, you'll have five minutes to address the council. I'm hoping somebody, Doug was supposed to keep track of time. I'm hoping we can have somebody volunteer to keep track of time. When you have one minute remaining, we will let you know, and then, you will be muted at the discretion of the mayor and the Sergeant-at-arms. Please be aware of what's happening in the background. Please be aware of background noise. And please just generally be aware of your surroundings. I think that should take care of it, Pete.
And Mike, could you unmute Councilman Cosgrove?
Oh, there. I've sent him an invitation to unmute.
Great, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Pete.
And Mary Jane, I have sent you an invitation to unmute as well.
Okay, got it.
All right, we're at 6:50.
Can we unmute Karen Pollard, Mike?
I thought I did that. I've sent out an invitation to Karen to unmute. Karen, there's a unmute button in the bottom-left corner of your screen. It looks like a microphone with the red slash going through it, or you can click on the link, the invitation I just sent you.
I should be unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Okay, so, we are at 6:51. This is the public hearing, and it regards to our sewer abatement. This is something that we had a public hearing prior to, was unanimously approved at our former public hearing, and also by town council. And the town attorney, because of the COVID-19, the time that has elapsed, we need to revisit this again, because of the dates. Is that correct, Attorney Dabella? Randy, are you on? Randy, you're gonna have to unmute yourself.
Actually, I think Mike needs to unmute me.
I sent you an invitation.
Okay, you're good now.
Got it. Yes, you're exactly right. Because of the timeline, which is nobody's fault except COVID-19, you have to have a new public hearing, because you didn't, you couldn't have acted within 45 days of the last one.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to call this public hearing to be opened. First, I'd like to address, have Karen Pollard, our Economic Development Director, re-summarize the public hearing and the sewer abatement that we spoke about previously. Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Town Council, for bringing this issue back up at this point. Fortunately, we still continue to have interest in businesses locating in our region, but again, it's a very competitive environment. If anything, it's more competitive now, and more difficult now with COVID-19 than it's ever been. This proposal is to take the ordinance that we already have, and this is actually regarding property tax deferral, not the sewer portion.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, because we are discussing, we have in process two different incentives that we are working on. One, of course, is to get more people to hook up to sewer, but this particular one that is being at the public hearing tonight is regarding property tax abatement for new construction or major investment, and I'm talking major investment into existing real estate. So, as you may recall, or maybe not, we had discussed taking our existing ordinance, which had a sliding scale of relief on property taxes for the first seven years that a new building or new project occurred in certain specific geographic areas. What the recommendation is from the Economic Development Commission and from my office is to change this somewhat, add some categories that New Milford will find very desirable, which, again, are allowed by state legislation and that we would have to adopt, but that will allow us to expand the geographic area in which we are encouraging and incentivizing new construction. So, I think many of you are aware that New Milford has land available, but we don't have a lot of existing vacant space, which does put us in a situation when we're looking at people looking to move in a hurry. We can make a great deal, however, for somebody who wants to move and has the opportunity to build something new to their specifications. What the recommendation is, is that we change the sliding scale to a five-year flat rate abatement for the increase in taxes. So, what that means, and I think you might recall some of the examples we talked about in January and February, if somebody modifies an existing building and has an increase in assessed value of at least $50,000, they would then be eligible for relief on only the increased portion of that value. So, they will never pay less than what they're already paying in value. The rate, the mill rate might change, but they'll still have to pay on that original value for five years. After the five years, it goes to the 100% contribution. So, it's a short but powerful incentive for new construction modifications that are major. Again, it can't be just something interior that is not going to increase the value of the structure. So, if they don't hit that $50,000 threshold of new value, even though they may do the facade, they may do other things on the exterior or interior, if it doesn't hit that threshold, there is no benefit. If they exceed that, they will get the 100, well, they will have to apply and get the 100% of the increase after five years. And I did, I don't know, I think that example from January was resent out. That was done in coordination with myself and the tax assessor in looking at what the, what two examples that would be maybe common to us might look like. One was a new industrial building, one was an existing downtown building. And I think those two items are certainly what we're targeting in having an incentive like this.
Karen, if you could expand for the town council and those that are on this call. So, for instance, the properties, it's valued today without any kind of improvements, which would be an additional building or an expansion of a building. They are still paying that tax. This is just on supplemental increases, which then we, as a town, would get in year six. So, it's money that we know we're gonna get, but it gives the opportunity for the developer or the business owner to go and get proper financing, which in some cases, additional cash flow would be needed in order to do this.
You are 100% correct. So, the idea is that an investor or a building owner themselves could take their building, make a major investment, but it might take some time, certainly in the current environment, to find new tenants, to recoup the investment that they're getting, and they may not have the cash year one to pay the property tax on a major increase. Or, if you're constructing a new building, the owner or the lessee would continue to pay the tax on the pre-improvement value, and in year six would pay 100% of the new value. So, there would be a five-year period where the taxes, the property taxes would be reduced by that increment, by that new portion only. The rest still gets paid.
And Karen, also, could you expand for the council, and for those that are listening as well, is, are there other towns where you now are trying to bring business in that you have these type of incentives?
Yes. Actually, many, many communities in Connecticut have similar incentives. Many work on a sliding scale, which is what we currently have. However, we have not seen much impact from having this in the past. Danbury has a much broader impact in their fees. So, they are reaping a lot of benefits from having more years at 100%. When the Economic Development Commission looked at all of the different communities and the different types of scales, it seemed that the best choice for New Milford would be to go with the five-year flat rate of 100% for everything over $50,000, and up to, well, actually, I guess there is no minimum. So, in Danbury, they have, they don't incentivize smaller improvements of $50,000 to $250,000 at this rate. But honestly, I think that we should be looking at attracting manufacturers, smaller investors, and even the smaller buildings of 50,000 to 100,000 square feet that might not meet the larger thresholds of $2 million construction and things like that. I think New Milford would be a very desirable place, and we just have to get our message out there, and this will absolutely do that.
Thank you. Does anyone from the council have any questions for Karen? Chris? Karen, thank you. Just one question is, I think we last discussed this February-ish, before we had really heard much about COVID-19. Do you think the effectiveness of this changes at all in a COVID-19 environment?
Actually, I think we need this more than ever, because right now, we, the door is open. We are getting some phone calls. We are getting a lot of Realtor or site selector interest. But what they're doing is they're comparing a lot of different communities in the same region, which wasn't the case six months ago. So, right now, they're looking to say, okay, I want to get out of New York City, and I want to move my business and my family. Where should I go? And we have a hard time getting on the radar for those kind of projects. And that's where I think this will level the playing field with some of the other communities that are out there, and they can say, okay, I can't go into an existing space. Again, I mentioned, we don't have much existing space. However, if I built the building I want and always wanted for my business, this place will give me an incentive to do so. And I think that will set us apart and differentiate us from others.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else from the council have any questions for Karen? Mike, if you could open up the mics for everyone, so that we could ask if anyone that's currently on the call, if they have any questions for Karen?
Okay, I am going to select "Ask All to Unmute." For those calling in on the telephone, to unmute yourself, you will have to press *6.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address this public hearing? Okay. All right. So, what I'd like to do is ask all those, oh, first, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing, if I can.
Moved.
Second. And is there any discussion from anyone concerning the public hearing that we're having currently? All those in favor of adjourning the public hearing?
Aye.
Do we have anyone that is opposed? Going once, going twice, going three times. Again, I will ask, do we have anybody that's opposed? Okay. The, the, carries, and the town council has, if I'm a correct Attorney Dabella, 65 days to act if they so choose on this, and I believe we'll be bringing this up quicker than that. The next, I'd like to move on to our town council meeting, which is now at 7:04. Running a little late. Mike, could you, again, explain the town council procedure after moving forward?
Okay, would you prefer that I run that video again? Were you able to get audio? It takes three and a half minutes.
That would be great. Thank you, Mike.
All right, I will run that video, folks. If you can just bear with me for about 30 seconds while I get that loaded up and get my audio change over. This'll take about three minutes to explain how every, three and a half minutes to explain how everything is going to work from a technical side and from the operation of the meeting. So, here we go, folks. Hi, I'm Mike Sinello, and I'll be your Zoom meeting administrator for tonight's town council meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM Eastern. Before the meeting starts, I put together this brief instructional video to help you get better acquainted with the Zoom meetings platform and how this virtual town council meeting will operate. Before we get started, we would like to kindly ask non-council participants to please keep your audio and video muted throughout unless called upon. As you are brought into the meeting, for example, from a waiting room, you will have the momentary ability to unmute your video. We kindly ask that you refrain from doing so, and each participant's video will be manually muted upon entry, one at a time. If you do not want to see non-video participants, hover your mouse over a non-video participant video image. Click these three dots highlighted in blue and select "Hide Non-Video Participants." If you want to see all the councilmen at the same time, rather than focusing only on the councilman who is speaking, select "Gallery View" in the top-right corner of the viewing panel. If you would like to participate in public comment, you must first raise your hand, and you'll be added to the list of public comment participants on a first-come, first-served basis until the meeting's commencement at 7:00 PM. When we say "raise your hand," we don't mean literally hold your hand up to the camera. To raise your hand, first make sure the Participants panel is open at the right of your screen. You can open the Participants panel by clicking the Participants icon at the bottom of your screen. Once the Participants panel is open, to raise your hand, select "Raise Hand" in the bottom-right corner of the Participants panel. For telephone-only participants, to raise your hand, press *9 on your telephone touchpad. I will be taking names for public comment as soon as this video finishes, and at the mayor's request, we'll be calling on participants for public comment on a first-come, first-served basis. Once you're called upon, I will send out a request to unmute yourself, as you will be self-muted upon entry. To unmute yourself in desktop, click the unmute icon in the bottom-left corner of the viewing panel, and which looks like a microphone with the red slash through it, or simply select "Unmute" in the request message. For telephone-only participants, press *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Once you've been unmuted for public comment, you'll have five minutes to address the council. Time will be kept by the acting sergeant-at-arms. We'll alert you when you have one minute left. When your time is expired, the sergeant-at-arms will let you know, and I will then mute you at either the mayor's request or at the request of the sergeant-at-arms. I will only act upon their instruction throughout the meeting, and will neither mute nor unmute except upon entry any participant otherwise. For the record, as a Zoom meeting administrator, I will not be an active participant in the meeting. This means, once the meeting is started, my camera and microphone will be muted unless otherwise called upon by either the mayor or the sergeant-at-arms. The final request before this video ends is to please be aware of your surroundings. Please be aware of background noise, such as dogs barking, children yelling, or nearby fan blowing, visible background activity, and potential feedback from your microphone picking up the sound from your speakers. It is for this reason that we highly recommend the use of headphones. Thank you for watching. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, and if you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hands now, and do not put them down until called upon for public comment after the meeting has commenced. All right, so I think that could do it. Pete, if you have anything more?
No, thank you, Mike, again, for acclimating everyone to our new procedure that we're doing here, starting this evening. And Mike, could you read off what you're showing now as people that have their hand raised for public participation? I do believe, Mike, that the 354-1208...
Walter.
Walter. So, if we could unmute Walter, as he is a seated councilman?
Hello, can you hear me?
You can hear me, Walter.
Hey, Walter.
Hi, Walter.
I'm glad I have arrived. Now, what happens? If I have to unmute myself again, or if I want to get in, I have to push *9?
So, Walter, you are going to be unmuted as a seated councilman, so you can, you know, you can just stay unmuted if you choose. You know, you can just stay unmuted if you choose.
Can I get a roll? I see Katie, Mike Nahom, Dave Lawson, Michael, Chris Cosgrove, Mary Jane, Tom, and now Walter, I think. Is Doug on the call somewhere?
Doug is not. Doug had messaged me that he will not be making tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Okay. So Mike, if you could put who you're showing with hands raised, and they will be public participation.
Okay, so just as a reminder, for people calling in via telephone, you need to press star nine to raise your hand, and to mute and unmute yourself, star six. So I have, in the order that I saw the hands get raised, Pat Erickson, I have Harold, and I have Jeff. Total of three.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? Yes? Perhaps we could do the pledge first? Yep. Well, what I want to do, Dave, before we do that, is just make sure that we have these...
Okay, all right.
...for participation, we have it logged in, everybody knows what they are, and then we can move on with the meeting. So Mike, let's going once, going twice. Those will be the three for public participation. And as Councilman Lawson has said, we could all rise for the pledge. And Dave, if you could lead us in the pledge service.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could have our moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and our first responders. Thank you. If we go with public comment now, Mike?
Okay, I have to start Pat Erickson. Pat, I am sending you an invitation to unmute.
Good evening, everyone. I have two issues I'd like to bring before the town council this evening. I'll try to keep them brief so you're not on this meeting forever tonight. Regarding the Sustainability Fund, when I first saw the fund was listed and we made a donation to it, I did it because at the time, it said something about it was going to go to first responders. I had already donated to Camilla's Cuddards and other things in town, but I thought there was nothing out there for first responders that needed it. Apparently, there's been some question as how it should be distributed. I would like you all to remember John Rogers' words, "God so loved the world, he did not commit a, did not make a committee to get something done." So what I'd like to see happen, if at all possible, is the money that has been gathered to get divided between our first responders and let them decide who in their units need the money or how they need to spend it. And if we are going to help any farmers, I would like to see the money spent to purchase products from each farmer that we have in town, not just one, but do that to all of them, and donate the food products to social services or to Camilla's Cuddards or those in need. I think the money would go much farther that way, and I think more people can be helped that way. That is all that I had care to say about that. Regarding the enforcement of the waterways, Bravo, Pete, you've got a lot of cars this weekend. I understand they ripped down the signs that the Public Works put up. My question is, are we ticketing these cars for trespass? Will they be going to court? So that is, that is something I'd like you to look into. There are fines for it, and obviously, they, just towing is not seeming to make too much of an impression, so I'd like to see it a little stronger against them and let them have to go to court for it. The courts are a little bit backed up, but they'll have to pay fines. And that's it. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Beth.
Pat, I know you're a New Milford resident. Could you just state that for the record?
Yes, New Milford resident, 65 Buckingham Road, New Milford.
Thank you.
Sorry, Stephanie.
That's all right.
I should know that by now.
Mike, can we move to the next?
Okay, coming up next is Harold. So Harold, your invitation is sent out now.
Harold, if you could please state your full name and address, please. Harold? Harold? If you could please state your name and your address. And for the record, Mike, as we are recording, as you can see in your top left-hand corner, we are recording this. You can see that there is no mute that's on there. Am I correct, Mike?
Correct, he is not muted. Harold, if you are having issues with your microphone, in the bottom left-hand corner with the, where the mute button is, there is a carrot symbol. If you click on that carrot symbol, it will allow you to select a microphone, or at the very bottom, open your audio settings. Also, it'll allow you in that section to test your speaker and microphone. So if, if you would like, Pete, I can move him to the back of the line and go on to Jeff and come back.
Yes, thank you.
That's what I will do. I'll give you some time to get your audio settings fixed, Harold. Okay, Jeff, your unmute invitation has been sent.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. I'm interested in the appointment list for patrol officers for the Lake Lilinona Authority. It's interesting that former New Milford Police Officer Larry Ash, and it appears to be another member of his family, are on the list of appointees to patrol these waters. In other words, also to be in a law enforcement capacity. I believe it was reported pretty thoroughly about a year ago that when Mr. Ash resigned, rather than be interviewed for an internal affairs issue, and that was being not only carried out by our police department, but also through the state police, that if one resigns in order to avoid an internal investigation, you are barred from future employment in law enforcement. At the time last year, Lake Lilinona Authority had hired Mr. Ash prior to his resignation, or it may have been just after, but it was because the mayor, Mayor Bass, had claimed that Mr. Ash had been exonerated. We know that he had not been exonerated on three separate accounts, which are available in the public record. The question is, why not only are we recommending the appointment of this officer, but why are we also recommending some other member of his household? It smacks of cronyism. The fact that there are no other qualified people, that suddenly we have to only pick from two residents of New Milford, one of whom had to resign from the police force, another one we don't know anything, at least I don't know anything about. But in this day and age, especially when we're trying to improve things such as, you know, hiring minority candidates, looking far and wide for qualified people, how is it that only two people from the same household, who clearly have the support of the mayor, mayor referred to the issues against Mr. Ash last year as fake news? Fake news. It was real then, it's real now. So again, before you approve that list of candidates, not only is it incumbent upon the, the town council, but also upon Lake Lilinona Authority to really come out and say, how is it that these people are selected? How is it that, for instance, someone from, I, I believe it was as far away as, as Hartford would be on the Lake Lilinona Authority? There have to be other local candidates. And if there aren't, we need to do a better job of outreach, because right now, again, this not only looks bad, it looks terrible. So I ask you to please consider this thoroughly before approving this list of candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, can we try Harold again?
Okay, Jeff has been muted. Harold, I hope you got your audio settings fixed. We're going to send you out one in another invi, excuse me, another invitation. And the invitation has been sent. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Harold? Harold, would you like to speak tonight at public participation? Please note again, see on the left, top left-hand corner, we are recording these, and as you can see, and verified by Mike, this mute button isn't one, and the mic is open, correct?
If Mike is on, I don't know if he's got his, some problem with his own settings, but from our end, everything has been allowed and has actually passed through.
Okay. So seeing as Harold, we're going to go once, twice, three times. Okay? Thank you, Mike. We're going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is going to be mayor's remarks. I'd like to start off briefly to talk about, and congratulations to our New Milford students. The school year has ended, as we know, and for those that have graduated, congratulations again, as we talked about at the first meeting. Wonderful job was done by all in honoring our New Milford High School 2020 graduates. An outstanding job by everybody in the community to honor these people, especially during these pandemic and really unprecedented times. Also like to thank all the students that are moving into different grades. Congratulations. Your hard work paid off, and God bless for this next coming year. Also, we'd like to talk a little bit about the, which I'm getting lots of comments on, is where does a school going from now and going in the fall? So currently, Dr. Parker has set up an envisioning subcommittees, of which I'm on the facilities one, and they're all working diligently to provide the input needed by, for Dr. Parker and for the Board of Ed. Excuse me, could you, could you, there you go. If you, for, for the opportunity to bring forward to Dr. Parker and to the Board of Ed their required information for them to make their phases, which are required by the state by the 24th, I believe, 23rd, 24th. Those phases are Phase One, which would entail the schools to be open a full 180 days, full complement of the students going, and what the needs would be for that with a cost analysis. Phase Two is a hybrid, where you'd have some of the kids going some of the time, and at the other times, it would be doing long-distance learning. And Phase Three would be as if Governor Lamont decides with additional information, if, if our COVID numbers escalate, hospitalizations escalate, where he then would decide to bring a closure, as he did prior to the schools, and it would be complete long-distance learning. They are working diligently to come up with those plans. They will not only let the state know, but let the town know as well. Also, those that know, Dr. Parker has tendered her resignation, will be working diligently to help complete this process. The Board of Ed is having a special town meeting, virtual town meeting tomorrow night to address the recommendation of their ad hoc search committee for an interim superintendent. So we'll be getting more information as after they had their meeting tomorrow night. Also, congratulations to the Water Witch Fire Chief Squires and the Water Witch Fire Company for their presentation, which they did on the fourth, concerning their moving uniforms that they have redone. Nice uniforms. We did have some people that liked the older ones, but congratulations to Chief Squires and to the Water Witch Fire Department for everything they do and for their new uniforms. Also, they did a small parade again for the Fourth of July. Unfortunately, we could not do our Fourth of July fireworks due to gatherings and social distancing, so we'd like to thank them for, again, on the Fourth of July going out. And thank you for allowing me to participate in that as well. Keep the council updated on our COVID-19 confirmed cases as of today, and speaking with our Health Director, Mike Krespin. And when I mean confirmed cases, as we've talked about before, these are since the inception. This by no means is the amount of people that are COVID positive, but it's the way that the state tracks the numbers currently, as we're going through to expand this with contract, more in-depth contact tracing, which we'll be talking about at the next meeting. The current numbers are, the state of Connecticut is 45,523. Litchfield County, 1,448, which is up one. Hospitalizations for the whole entire county is one, and that is unchanged. And New Milford is currently at 299 cases, and that's currently unchanged. We've had a run of about two weeks, where most of the days, we have unchanged. If not, it goes up just one or two. So I cannot thank, thank our public enough for continuing to work as a community to try and help fight this pandemic. As we all know, that, that includes our social distancing, wearing masks, hand hygiene, which is 20 seconds under as hot a water as you can stand, up to your wrists, under your fingernails. If you can't do that, please, you can't sanitize her. Also, Governor Malloy has put in the travel advisory. It is up to 19 states now, and from coming from there, either you were there or someone that you know is coming to see you from there, we are asking for you to do volunteer 14-day quarantine, and those states are Alabama, Arkansas, Arizona, California, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Iowa, Idaho, Kansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, Nevada, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, and Utah. So if you're traveling through that, from, to there, and then coming back, or you have someone that you know that's coming to see you from there, we are asking you to self-quarantine for 14 days to continue the state and the town's good work in keeping our numbers, and we have bent the curve, so we want to continue to do that. We do not want to go where other states have now, where they've had reoccurrences and escalations in their COVID numbers, which is causing, as we have all seen by reading or watching the news, that some of them are going back on some re-lockdowns. So if we can all help each other, that would be wonderful. I'd also like to thank Alexis and Carr, which is the Children's of the American Revolution, and our New Milford DAR, which is our Daughters of the American Revolution. And they've done wonderful work for the town and continue to do so, and leading the charge to having our New Milford veterans honored with banners that will be on the flagpole. They will be done for Veterans Day, so I cannot thank Alexis, as she's kind of the point person for that, and the Carr and the DAR, we'll have more information on that. That would be a wonderful gift and a wonderful opportunity to show our thankfulness for our veterans, who in some cases have given their ultimate sacrifice for our town, our state, and our country. So thank you for that. Also, an update on Lynn Demming. We continue to have Lynn Demming Beach open, so thank you to our park and rec team, Dan Calhoun, Laura Murphy, water maintainers, our lifeguards, our park ranger, and our security force. We continue to practice proper social distancing at Lynn Demming. Does that happen 1,000% of the time? Absolutely not. That's why we have our lifeguards there to help maintain that. We've been able to get up to 50% capacity on the weekends to allow more of our residents to enjoy this wonderful beach. I'd like to thank everybody as we move through this COVID-19 pandemic, for coming up with ways that allow our residents to have some relaxation. Also, our parks, as we know, were in Phase Three, so to speak. We have our playgrounds that are open. We have our youth activities, being baseball and soccer, that are open for our youth. Also, our movie theaters open. Restaurants are allowed up to 50%, 20, 50% capacity now in the restaurants. Also, the outside dining we're keeping, that allows those that feel uncomfortable to go inside to still be able to go outside and support our businesses. Thank you to our New Milford residents, continue to support our businesses, as they are the lifeblood and engine of our economic activity here in New Milford. So thank you to everybody as we continue to move forward with that. Also, I'd like to thank our Finance Department, Greg Oss. Also, I'd like to thank our finance department, Greg Asopow, and we've got Olga and the finance team for the great issuance that we had from Standard and Poor's. Had, was able to be on the call with, with our analysts, with, with our finance director. And even during COVID-19 and the present economy, the town continues with affirming our AA+ rating, especially here in Litchfield County. And some of the excerpts from the report that I think is well-known for our council and our public, is they had stated that New Milford's strong economy with a market value per capita of 156,702 and projected per capita buying income, which is called an EBI, is 100%, or 116% of the national level, which is very strong. Also, they had connotated our very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under our financial management asset mythology. So we've come up with news we've talked about since year one of our new policies and procedures, methodology of how we track our finances. Our analysts were very happy about that. Also, our budgetary performance was balanced operating results in the general fund. Very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, with total government available cash at 39.9% of total governmental fund expenditures, and a 9.5x governmental debt service and access to external liquidity, they consider very strong. Very strong debt and contingent liability position with a debt service carrying charges of 2% of expenditures. The policies and procedures that have been put in place provide additional dividends, as we can see, to our residents. We're going to continue to look at more ways to efficiently operate our town government and also focus on maximizing our taxpayers' dollars. We're going to provide the greatest return on investment for our residents and our business community here in New Milford. So thank you again to Greg, Olga, and our finance team, all of our department heads, our town employees for all their hard work as we continue to move New Milford forward through this pandemic. Also, a brief update, as we talked about with Town Council's approval, the last meeting, the separation of Sullivan Farm and of the youth agency. And I'm here to tell you that our, our youth agency director, Jason O'Connor, is doing a wonderful job bringing up youth agency to a more therapeutic model, of which I'm going to be asking him to come and present to the town council some of the wonderful endeavors that our youth agency is bringing forward. Also to Mark Menken and Sullivan Farms, as they're beginning to get some of their produce in, which they are selling at Sullivan Farm and also bringing to our food bank locally, is providing fresh nutritious foods for those families in need as well. Also, we continue with our roadwork. This is our summer part of our project. This is the third year. And just for the council's edification, so far this year, completed work is McMelty Drive, Old Parkwood Road, Polaris Drive, Warwick Drive, Short Drive, Eagle Drive, the binder course, and the curving has been put in. First Drive, Gretel Lane, Carmen Hill to South, Carmen Hill to North, has the binder course and the curb installed. Carmen Hill One, the same binder course and curb installed. Miss Hill Drive, Wellsville Avenue. Look ahead for the next two weeks on our road program. Carmen Hill One, we're going to be looking to pave the top course. Driveway aprons, topsoil, seed, and mulch. Carmen Hill Two North, we're going to pave the top course. Driveaway aprons, topsoil, seed, and mulch. Eagle Drive, we're going to pave the top course. Geiger and Gardan Road, we're continuing to work with our drainage installation on this major road improvements. Brentwood Road, cobbler lane drainage repair. The bids were opened on 7/9 and awarded contract. We'll be renewing the contract. Wampum Drive, Indian Ridge Road and Arrowhead, we're adjusting or placing to catch space and tops, and we're going to reclaim and pave. So thank you to Jack Hule, our DPW team and contractors. We continue to move our road program forward, as we have been all throughout this COVID-19 pandemic. So kudos to all those as we continue to move forward. Also, concerning the Milford High School roof, we continue to move forward with that project. Talked about at the last meeting, our municipal building committee approved the standing seam, which will be a 50-year lifespan on that roof. We're looking to put that out, out to bid in December, as we talked about before. That way, we can comply with the time lapse from the approved roof from the Board of Education to the town and making those numbers work with monies that were allotted from our bond that we did last year to the monies that we are also doing now with the surplus, and then the additional monies that we're getting from the state as a reimbursement. So it's, it's up to, right now, projected over $4 million project that we're able to do through the endeavor, the endeavors of our town council, our Board of Finance, and our residents. So thank you. Also, we're going to be working on our town hall roof. The municipal building committee approved that. We're going to be doing much more than just putting asphalt in. We're actually going to do it the right way as well. Do all the structural work that's been needed for years, and then we'll too have a 50-year roof on the town hall, which we can all be proud of. The library continues to go through its renovation work. We'll have an update for you, the council, at the next meeting as well, from our Clerk of the Works. And that's all I have for right now, Katie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving on, consent agenda, item four, A, B, and C, motion to accept.
Don't move, Walter Bear.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? For the councilmen, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pete, I just have to abstain from the, the minutes because I was not here last time.
And councilman abstains. Do you have that, do you have that, Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Katie?
Moving to item five, motion to appoint the Lake Lilinua Authority's law enforcement personnel list per the attached item number five that you received.
Thank you. I'd like to speak to that before we.
I second Chris.
So there was some comments made at public participation. I'd like to just set the record straight. Those names came from the Lake Lilinua Committee. They're the ones that every year recommend.
I just want to touch briefly on another, this is like the.
Hillary, if you could mute your phone, please. Thank you. Lake Lilinua brings forward the names of the members that they want to be as patrolling. So those names, as we have always done, we move those names forward. As we talk again about a New Milford resident, I, again, as I said before, and will continue to say again, the captain was retired. The, as we all know before, rather than redredging everything up again, we're an individual now who's in private practice, who is not involved with the New Milford Police Department. The investigations yielded nothing when it came to responses. The only thing that would have recourse would be for the New Milford Police Department internal organization, being the chief and his command force to, if at all, put any kind of recourse on that. So I just want the public to know, make sure that's in the record, and that's what I have so far. So anybody have any comments? We have a motion of first and a second.
Yeah, I do. I have my hand up.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
Okay. So do we know what the qualifications are for these people that come forward for the, for the Lake Authority? And what is the qualifications for, you know, they have the regular officers and then they have the assistants? Do you have any idea what these qualifications are, or they just send us the names and they do all the, they do the interviewing? What, what's the process? I guess.
Yes, Mary Jane. So the committee, what they do is they do all the vetting. They do all of the, the legwork, so to speak. With their looking at it, I do know they look, does they have, do they have any boating experience? If they do have law enforcement experience, that is a definite plus for them, because it makes it easier when you have people patrolling the lakes, whether it be Candlewood or whether it be Lake Lilinua. And then, as they have in prior years, they forward those names to the towns, because New Milford isn't just the only town. Brookfield also would be voting on these, and then it's brought for our recommendation. And as it's been in, in prior years on council, the council looks to approve those as they've been vetted by the Lake Lilinua Committee. And that's how it was done this year as well.
So we have no idea if they interviewed minorities or women or anybody else?
I do not. I can ask the chairman of Lake Lilinua to come to the next council, if you, if it's the purview of the council, to talk about that. We could do that as well.
Okay, because I think it'd be, it'd be good for us to know what the actual process is and what the actual qualifications are. And especially, you know, with an assistant. And I, I have issue with Mr. Ash being appointed. I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't know about his, I don't, I assume it's his son that's being appropriated, appointed to. And, you know, we, we have two people from the same family taking up two positions and possibly somebody got excluded. So I'm not going to be, I mean, if we can take these names separately, I would be happy to vote on the rest of them. But I will not be supporting Mr. Ash because of the prior comments that were made. And I will not be supporting, I guess it's his son, because it's two members out of the same family.
Yes. I, I don't have any objection to anyone in particular on this list, but I do think it would be a good idea to have someone come and explain to us, since we do have New Milford people on here and people in our town use the lake. I would personally like to know, do they interview them? What are the minimum qualifications? And have they done their due diligence to maintain some effort to include women, minorities? You know, I'd like to know that. Is, is it important that this be voted on today? It's dated June 11th, so.
Hey, I don't, I don't believe so. But I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, but I don't believe so. But we, if it is the purview of the council to push this to the next meeting, I can definitely ask the chairman or someone representing Lake Lilinua to come in and talk to the town council, how they come about with the names, if there is any other ones that have been interviewed before, or if these are ones that are the only ones that interviewed, if that's the purview of the council.
Well, I'd like, I'd like it for the social equity aspect. I, I don't know anybody, well, I know the Mr. Ash, but just, I think I'd be interested to hear it.
Yeah, I agree.
Chris, you can't start with Katie.
I agree, Pete.
The other thing is, I see some places, you know, there's Bristol and West Hartford and things like that, so I'm curious as to what the qualifications are.
Chris?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to say, just regarding Captain Ash, I fully support him being on here. I, I think we're fortunate to have someone with decades of law enforcement experience on it. But at the same time, I think, as Katie said, understanding, and Mary Jane said, understanding the process wouldn't hurt. So I'm always interested in process and qualifications in that. But, so if it can wait until we, we understand that, that'd be great. If it can't wait, I'm happy to vote this list through tonight.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And we have someone withdraw the second.
That would be Chris?
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I move to table this to our meeting of the 27th of July.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Well, before we table it, don't we need to find out if someone from the, from the Lake, Lake, somebody can be here?
I'm pretty sure they can send somebody.
Well, that's a assumption. We'll try and make sure.
Well, then I'm not going to vote on it on the 27th if they can't get somebody to come on in two weeks. I mean, let's face it, Mike, that's a, we have the right to know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
So you're adverse to tabling it? You just want to remove the motion?
Either way, just as long, I mean, I just don't want to be on the agenda if we don't have someone there representing.
Here's the real question. Do these folks need to be on the, the lake starting tomorrow or this weekend to protect other boaters from people that may be breaking the law, driving their boats intoxicated on the weekends, which does happen? That's one of the reasons why these guys are out there. So tabling this for two weeks, I, I want to hear exactly the process. I agree with everybody. But this is not a, you know, just a casual group. These folks are enforcing the law and making sure that the lake is safe, which we're in the heat of the sun. I think the reason that they're, that they're in front of us now is because they need people on it. I, I've watched this group come in front of us for the last 11 years, and I'll know, I can tell you, even the Lake Authority will tell you, it's not easy to find folks with any experience to get on the lake. So.
This list was provided over a month, a little over a month ago. And I don't believe we've heard from them that this is an emergency. I imagine they still have people in force on the lake. Is that so, Mr. Bass, Mayor?
I believe so.
They probably have to keep them on until they're either reappointed or.
Well, again, I'm, I'm all for tabling this. It's been seconded.
I'm for tabling also. Can we call the question?
Do we, all those in favor of tabling and bringing you towards the next town council, please?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Walter Bear, opposed.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Item six, motion to accept the reformation of recycling, excuse me, Recycling Committee Two.
Walter Bear, second, first.
And for certification, this is the same committee that's been meeting for many years. So thank you to the committee for their continued work on recycling. We have a question for a second. Any discussion on the committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item seven, motion to accept the appointment of Kevin Reynolds as our permanent New Milford Fire Marshal.
Second.
Walter Bear, don't move.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Mary Jane, was there a question? No, I just, I have a question.
Yes.
As long as we're on personnel, I just wanted to know, has Michael Sinello been appointed to our IT? Or how is, what, what's with our IT? We have two people, and how come they're not there today?
They are there. Ken is there.
Ken is here.
Is Michael being paid?
No. Mike is doing this pro bono. I have reached out to Mike Sinello. We had some of our community members that were saying that this, our, our performance during town council meetings when it comes to this type of process or the meetings was not at the speed. So I'd asked Mr. Sinello, who has experience in audio vision, to come and help out what he's doing as a volunteer. And I can't thank Mr. Sinello enough. We do have Ken from the IT department here. If needed, there's something they would have to do with the structure of the town's internet or anything else to structural part of this.
So just a question was, Mr. Watson wasn't able to fix this or get us on Zoom? Like, I just.
So Mr. Watson could definitely do that, but Mr. Watson's time, I believe, would be way more better served as he also serves in the Milford Police Department. And if there's any systems that do go down during this, then require him go and go and work, which then would be hindrance to our first responders waiting on a Zoom call.
Is there some way to stop the feedback?
That's coming from Stephanie, someone that has an open mic.
I just asked Ken if he could check. It might be Mike Sinello's mic is open.
No, I just turned my microphone on.
Oh, you did? Okay. Well. Okay, so is that, are we discussed over?
Yes.
Okay. Item number eight, motion to accept the mission statement for the New Milford Sustainability Fund.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Cosgrove, could you speak to the sustainability fund?
Okay, yep, so we've, as the COVID crisis has evolved, we've been, you know, we started this back in March and April. And so with the help of, you know, quite a few people here, we've kind of tweaked and evolved and focused the mission of the fund. And I'll read verbatim here for everybody. The mission of the New Milford Sustainability Fund is to help reduce adverse economic consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic as they affect New Milford's first responders, small businesses and residents who are in expedited process. The fund will be used to help subsidize or finance aid that is not currently available within our community through municipal or other agencies. That's it. Maybe not quite so short, but hopefully sweet. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. I can go into a little bit of how the structure and how we're going to operate is changing slightly.
Yeah, I would like to hear that.
Sure. So, you know, I think one issue, we've said from the beginning that funds to be distributed would need to come through town council. And that's what we've told the people who have donated to the fund. So I think it's important that we follow through with that. However, we started thinking that people might not apply for aid if they knew their names and their circumstances are going to be coming up in a public meeting in front of town council. So what we think is a, probably the best option would be optimal is have a committee of three, a bipartisan committee that would review all applications. We would also be using social services as kind of an adjunct advisory position. They could really help us with applications and applicants to see if maybe they would be eligible for funds in other agencies, that sort of thing. So I think they could provide a valuable service. So that committee of three would then, if they decided to move a request forward, that then would come forward to the town council and it would be, we wouldn't be naming the name or the circumstances of the person, but it would come through in the consent agenda, which we would still vote on. And probably within the August meeting, we can, hopefully we'll have that committee of three in place and we can discuss who that is. And I would also like to provide the council an update on the fund balance. So as of Friday, we have $15,273.32.
Anybody have any questions for Councilman Cosgrove?
I do. So were small businesses part of this in the beginning or is this something that just got added?
No, small businesses were part of it in the beginning. Yep. It's basically, it's first responders, residents and small businesses. That.
So any, any resident can apply?
Yes.
But you know, the thing about the small businesses is that they can get state and federal money. So, and you know, we have Karen Pollard working on helping our small businesses. I don't know why the small businesses would be included in this, but.
Yeah, I mean, Mary Jane, I, I'm not sure there's a whole lot, again, where we are with the way this has evolved. We're probably at a point where there wouldn't be a lot of appropriate applications from a small business. It was originally thought when PPE was hard to get and that sort of thing, we could help with that and maybe help with reopening some businesses and that, a little ways down the road. So I'm not sure that we'll probably see applications that would fit, but it has to be COVID related. So, but it's, they're still one of the three segments that we're aiming this for.
Yeah, I don't know. I think you start to get into kind of murky water with having the small businesses included. Personally, I still believe that this money, this whole thing should just be turned over to social services and let them, let them handle. They've got all the funds and, you know, where they can direct the money to and to people that need it and without having the town have to be involved in the whole thing. It just, to me, it makes more sense. I mean, I think we're creating another process that possibly, you know, it's like reinventing the wheel. They already have all the mechanisms to deal with it and the confidentiality and, you know, the expertise. So I think that's kind of like, almost like a redundant. I mean, it's great that these people donated, but, you know, they could have just donated to social services too and it would be going out to people that need it. Have you had anybody apply aside from that, the one application that came before the council a month ago?
Yeah, there were the two applications from the one person, but no, nobody else since then. And, you know, honestly, I wonder if the confidentiality part of it might be holding some people back. But I think also as fall and winter come, it's more likely the needs will arise.
Yeah, I think there's going to be fuel and food and fuel are going to be the two, you know, people paying rent and whatever else. Because we're not going to be out of this in the winter. But I just think, I just think, I don't know, I just don't agree that the town should be doing this. I think it should be all done through social services. It's my opinion.
Oops, sorry. Mary Jane, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Katie, before you, Walter, are you on a speakerphone?
I'm sorry, pardon?
Are you on a speakerphone? Because we're getting the reverberation from your phone.
No, I am not on a speakerphone.
Katie?
Mary Jane, you and I had talked about this. The socials, the plan is that social services will be involved to review the applications to make sure that people have gotten all of the help they can from the existing programs that we have. But as for small businesses, a small business is considered an employer of 500 or less people by the government. A small business in our town could be somebody who has one or two, you know, a fledgling startup. I can think of a couple that I'm familiar with. And while there is money, there was money from the government for PPP and our Economic Development Office and Karen are talking to all kinds of businesses. There are still people who won't qualify for a, what I will call a structured payment of some sort. So with this program, they can come and say very candidly, I can't pay for whatever, the heat in my shop or I can't buy the rags I need to clean the product. And that can be judged where that wouldn't really be appropriate by size if it's really a small group. But the other thing is, the Social Services Office, I mean, we're not a big enough city, but even if we were, like say, let's say Danbury, they're really not involved nor trained to deal with the type of requests that could come the way that this is set up. It's one thing if someone needs help with fuel or food, but let's say we are talking about a small business who needs something. They certainly are going to be asked to look and make sure that this person is aware of other options, number one. But also they wouldn't really be capable of doing this. With this committee, they have a way to talk to the person and check it. Social services is there because the confidentiality is key for this. As Chris said, I think some people haven't come forward because it wasn't made clear, as you and I even talked about it, that the council should not know any, no one should know anything about the people other than the fact that they want to apply. So I think once we have our next meeting and Chris can, and we can have Chris send out more details on the, on the actual process, I think it'll be clearer then for you. But I wouldn't want redundancy any more than you would because I think that that's not efficient. So I think this fund is, the intent of it and what it's going to do is help people who fall outside of what the state, the federal or Economic Development Office here or even social service programs can help them. So, but again, this is nascent right this moment. You'll have more details, I guess, Chris, in a couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then the council, you know, you can look at it, Mary Jane, but I am with you. I don't want to pay to redo the wheel. And I think, I do know there are people who don't fit into those other slots. And people have donated, so we can help these people and I think we should do so.
Okay, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Right, thanks.
Any other discussion on the Sustainability Fund? Thank you, Chris, thank you, Katie, thank you, Mary Jane.
We accept the mission statement. That was the, that was the motion.
We have a second?
Yes.
Second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd prefer to do it all together in one lump sum. When we.
Yeah.
You don't approve the mission statement. We can't really let him move forward if you don't approve the mission statement because everything follows from that.
Well, that's true.
Would you like to hear it again? Chris could read it again.
No, very well, very well.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain for now until I see the whole deal.
You have the votes?
Okay.
Yep.
Uh oh, dogs are here.
Mine, it's mine, sorry. I'll be back.
Okay, item number nine, motion to move forward with the tax incentive ordinance as approved at the public hearing that was held this evening at 6:50.
Second.
Walter Bear, don't move.
That's a Thomas Pizzito, second, please.
Got it.
This was done at our public hearing. We have a discussion on the tax incentive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Walter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good evening.
Take care, everybody.
Bye bye.
Indeed.
Can you end our meeting tonight?
I'm sorry, pardon?
I was asking Mike if he could end the meeting tonight.
As a co-host, I can leave it.
Yep, and that'll end, that'll end it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.